Okay. It is seven o'clock, so I am going to call the meeting to order. And welcome, everybody. And I just want to make sure that my cellphone is on silent. And if you have cellphones or electronic devices, please make sure they are on airplane mode or on off. With that, I'm going to ask that this is the city council meeting for Minatrista, January 18th, 2022. In our first order of businesses, I'm going to ask that you join me for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So again, welcome. I'm going to make a few introductions here. I'm going to start over on my left. On the back is our city clerk, Don Matzko. And then in the front of her, we have our Public Works Superintendent Gary Peters and our city engineer, Allison Fousky. And then we have councils up here on the DS. We have council members Kathleen Refkin and McGregor, John Chumperlin, Pam Mortenson. I'm Lisa Whalen. I'm the mayor. And then to my right, I have staff members. Brian Grimm is our finance director. Allison, Al, Allison, Ally Palfus is our director of administration. And then sitting in for our chief of police, who is at the FBI Academy, is Craig Squires, who is our lieutenant. And absent this evening, we have David Abel, is not able to join us. And as you all know, we are currently in the search for a city administrator. So Brian is our go-to person this evening. Thank you, Brian. With that, is, are there any changes to the agenda? I don't think so. So is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Some of it.
Thank you, Pam. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, John. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So next, we have a special presentation this evening. And with us this evening, we have Marge Beard, who is our District One, which we are a part of, Commissioner to the Three Rivers Park District. Thank you, Marge, for coming out on this illustrious evening and joining us and sharing your expertise and information with us.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me? Is this?
Yeah.
Thank you. So thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me out tonight. As the mayor said, my name is Marge Beard, and I represent District One and the Three Rivers Park District Board of Commissioners. And District One includes all of western Hennepin County, including the city of Minatrista. I'm a longtime Plymouth resident, where I had the opportunity to serve on the Plymouth City Council. And I'd like to extend my personal thank you to you for your service on your city council, because I do know what it's like to get those calls and those emails. I really, again, thank you, because there's no better public service than I can think of that's as grassroots, where you really look your neighbor in the eye and make decisions that impact their home and their business. And for that, my thanks to you. So Three Rivers, we focus on promoting environmental stewardship through both recreation and education. And the key thing is in a natural resources-based park system. So for example, everything we do is natural resources-based. You will not see, for example, we don't have ball fields. That's one of the type of things we just don't, don't have in our park system. And we're really focusing, focused on trying to make sure people can connect with nature and get outside every day. So who is Three Rivers? Okay, so Three Rivers, or Park District, were known as a special park district. We were established by the state legislature in 1957. We are a standalone local unit of government. We are run by a Board of Commissioners. There are seven of us. Five are elected by serving one of the elective roles, and two are appointed from Hennepin County. Our district includes suburban Hennepin County. So basically, Hennepin County, with the exception of Minneapolis, because Minneapolis has its own park district. And we have long-term relationships with Scott County, where we actually help manage some of the Scott County parks. So it's good government. We kind of have economies of scale there and get a lot more for our dollars that way. We also do some partnerships with Hennepin County and some others, that Homeland and Park Districts that they, they, we partner them and we run them on our behalf. So Three Rivers, we have 25 parks for a large park district. Twenty-seven thousand acres of land. We have 170 miles of regional trail. And regional trails are those trails that are outside our parks. They connect parks to parks within our region. And then we have another 300 miles or so of trails within our parks. Some paved, some turf. There's something for everybody there. And we have nearly 14 million visits a year. It's really significant, because it's more than twice our state's population. So it's really a great asset in our community. So you probably know Three Rivers. Most people know Three Rivers for our recreation offerings, whether it's boating, or fishing, or now skiing, or golfing. You really know us for our recreation. But today, I'd like to talk to you about something maybe you don't know about Three Rivers. So as I mentioned, we're a natural resources-based park district. We really focus on natural resources. And a couple I'd like to point out. So as far as wildlife goes, so Three Rivers, we actually have wildlife biologists on staff, for example, so we actually do science. And in the 1960s, we were instrumental in reintroducing the trumpeter swan back here in Minnesota. So every time you see a trumpeter swan, you look around here in Minnesota, you look, it's like, my area's park district had something to do with that 40 years ago. We're also very focused on water quality. So if you've been over in any of our launch sites, you've noticed we have aquatic invasive species inspectors. We do inspections of water craft in and out of the water bodies. We have nearly 200 trained watercraft inspectors, and that makes us second to the DNR and the number of people dedicated to that function. And trees. Well, we have a lot of trees in our parks. The one thing you may not know is all our trees are local-based. So every tree within a Three Rivers park has to come from seed found within 25 miles of Hennepin County. So we have natural-based trees, and you won't see any ornamental trees, for, for example, like for trees or those type of things. Our parks are booming. And I think we all know, with the pandemic going on, all parks increased. Three Rivers, just like all the other parks, were booming, and it's continuing, continuing the activity. A lot of people, we could see in our data, started new activities and indeed kept them up. So it's pretty good. So a little bit about in local, local focus. So Gale Woods Farms is, I'm sure you're all familiar. It's a working farm where, I mean, it's a working farm where we actually sell the produce and the animal products from there. Some of the most popular things that go on there are Saturdays on the farm. So those are programs, they could be for adults, too, tend to focus on kids, families come out. It's wildly popular, and people like to come out and really experience the farm. But the whole location is focused on agricultural education. Lake Minnetaka Regional Park. So that's our public access to Lake Minnetaka. We have a large playground there as well. And the very popular sand-bottomed chlorinated filtered swim pond. So that's quite a popular amenity. And Kingswood Park. So that might be our more quiet park in the area. So we do own a park, Kingswood Park. We own some land. We've not developed it. If you go to our trailhead, there's four parking stalls, so it's, it's really an undeveloped park area. The reason we're focused on Kingswood has to do with water quality. The Long Lake, little Long Lake in there, has the most pristine water quality in all of Hennepin County. So we're trying to keep it that way. Dakota Railroad Regional Trail. That's the jewel in our regional trail system. It's the most-used trail by far. Baker Carver, you have a lot of stuff down here. And it's just that Baker Carver Regional Trail is the newest one we're working on locally. We completed last year a segment, and now we're working on continuing to work through that. And moving forward, so as I mentioned, we have a lot of experience throughout all of Hennepin County and Scott County with, you know, trees, law, all that. We're always looking for partnership opportunities. So if that's something that your staff has challenges with, you know, how to deal with some invasive species tree or things like that, we'd be more than happy to help partner with you, some done education. We see what happens throughout the county, so we would hope that you would look at us as a resource to tap into with those type of challenges. And last but not least, I have a few Minatrista fun facts. So out of our database, we know that the most popular park visited, Three Rivers Park, visited by Minatrista residents is the Lake Minnetaka Regional Park. And that is by far, it is, the next park is Gale Woods, and you have four times as many people go to Lake Minnetaka than Gale Woods. And then passes purchased, well, no real surprise there. If you're going to Lake Minnetaka, the most popular pass, again, overwhelming, is the swim pond annual pass. So people from interested, who would like that swim pond. Number two is the dog-off-leash pass. Number three is cross-country ski pass. And four is the boat trailer pass. Lots of use in our parks there. So I thank you for having me out here, and hopefully you learned something a little bit new about Three Rivers, and I'd be happy to attempt any questions if I have.
Thank you. So a lot of information. We used to do a city bus tour, and we always invited one member from Three Rivers to participate as one of our tour guides. So it was always fun to get a lot of this information about Three Rivers that pertains to our city. So that was really fun to have, and thank you for, you weren't part of it, but maybe next time you would be, obviously.
Back home, yeah.
Well, we have to get rid of this, you know, pandemic first, but yeah, so we, well, sure to keep you in mind. Questions? No. Well, thank you very much, and look forward to...
Could you, I'm sorry, could you fill me a little bit, how do you get funded?
Sure. So it depends on what kind of funding we're talking about, so...
I mean, is it partly legislative from the state legislature, or is how, so fees, things like that?
So we actually, we have a property tax levy. So there is a property tax levy. We also get money from the state from local state lottery. So some of that gets divided up in the regional park system, and we get a piece of that. Our number, we get a significant, our number two revenue comes from fees, you know, program fees that we charge. And when it comes to land acquisitions, we talked about many things that we, you know, parks that we purchased, we paid for that land, that money comes from the Met Council. The Met Council has a big pot of money that they divide up throughout the region for all the park system, and it's semi-competitive to try to get access to those ones.
And do you have like a, I'm sorry, final question. Do you have like a five-year plan on your website, a 10-year plan, as far as what you're looking to do going forward in the future, as far as future development of trails, things like that?
Yes. So just like cities have what's called a CIP, the capital plan, we also, so we run just like a city, our internal government. So we have a capital plan, and that has five years of capital improvements and projects and things slotted that we plan to do.
And your meetings are public?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we're a local unit of government.
Where are they held?
So our administrative headquarters is in Plymouth, and they're held there. Once a month, we have a board meeting. So we're running a board on council, but that's similar. And we have, just like the council here might have a special meeting or a study topic, we also have those, and they're all part of it.
And they're posted on the website, too. And their addresses, too. So, thank you. Yeah, some of these questions, obviously, we're real familiar with, so we don't think of asking, so thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you. So next, we have persons to be heard. Mr. De Colius, you're signed up. Would you like to speak now under persons to be heard, or would you like to wait and hear the information that is going to be shared with the council regarding the water, the water issue? And then if you have questions, I'll allow you time for those.
Whatever you prefer. I'll wait, if that's better for the council.
Well, why don't we wait? Because maybe some of your questions might be answered. All right. So remind me. All right. So then we'll move on to consent agenda items. Are there any you wish to remove? All right. Then our consent agenda items consist of approving our work session meeting minutes from January 3rd, 2022. Approve our city council regular meeting minutes from January 3rd, 2022. Approving our claims. And then D is a resolution granting final approval of the plat of West Highland addition. E is approving ordinance number 473, fee schedule amendment to the 2022 fee schedule. F is a resolution authorizing professional services for the 2022 MS4 general permit program implementation. And G is a resolution to accept the resignation of Gary Vars from our planning commission. He was one of our alternates. And also, H is a resolution accepting a resignation from Nancy Rickerson from our Parks Commission, who is also a alternate to our Parks Commission. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through H?
Some moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Mortensen. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. We don't have any public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to our business item. Our first business item is a conditional offer of employment for, I'll hand that over to Ms. Palfus.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, the city council is being asked to approve of offer of employment for Mr. Ryan Poole as the building inspector. Advertising for this position began on November 29th and closed on January 7th. In total, we received five applications. Ryan Poole emerged as the final candidate, and the personnel committee met on January 10th and provided direction to staff to continue with the process. Mr. Poole was offered the position with the conditional offer that was in your packet. As of today, we are just finishing up the background check and everything since we checked him. So a little more information on Ryan. He graduated from Watertown High School and began his career in the trades. For the last 20-plus years, he's been working at Sabre Plumbing and Heating. He has experience working within various code requirements, and he is willing to learn and eager to start. So we expect him to actually start next Monday. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? It'll be good to get another person on board. We're very fortunate to be able to have, have any applicants, let alone somebody that's qualified, so. Is there a motion to approve?
Some, I'll second.
Okay. Ms. Refkin made that motion, and Ms. Mortensen seconded that. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Thank you. So now we'll move on to our test well discussion and update on our south water treatment plant operations. And also, I asked our Public Works Superintendent to give us an update on the water tower. So, Ms. Fousky.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Originally, we had anticipated bringing back quotes for the next two test wells this evening. However, as the, the water team started taking a look at the well logs within a one-and-a-half-mile radius of the proposed test well sites, and looking through the well logs within the Tunnel City Wanawak, they discovered that the aquifer was not getting deeper, as we had anticipated from that geologic atlas, as if you recall seeing that at a past council meeting. They also took a look at, within the well logs, there is a presence of a fault. The pine fault was noted. And what that does is when there's a fault line, it, it moves the cross-section like this. So they, without knowing where that fault lies, it's, you have only one point in, in space to identify where that fault exists. There was no indication where that fault would lie with respect to the two test well sites. So that was, that was strike two in looking at these two test well sites. And then the third component was looking at the proximity of private wells within the test well sites. So there's a pecking order, if you will, that existing wells have a right to that water that the DNR has appropriated to those wells. And if the municipal well came in and started interfering with those private wells, the city would have to remedy that. And with, with so many wells within the vicinity, it was the, the water engineers, actually, there's two water engineers that looked at this, and they both agreed that these would not be appropriate sites for the test well. So in, in the interest of being prudent with the city resources, we did not proceed with the quote package, because based on the technical recommendation of the experts, they would not recommend digging the test wells anyway. So with that information at hand, the question is, of course, what are our next steps? What are our options? If this Tunnel City Wanawak is, is not looking, you know, we, we had a test well here, didn't produce the capacity necessary. We were looking to go east, where the atlas was showing it was going deeper. That wasn't the case, and other issues arose. So we're now looking at if the DNR would, with, with the council direction, what we would like to look at, do, at requesting from the DNR is if we can request permission to go into the Mount Simon aquifer. It's a deeper aquifer, both in the, the physical depth, top to bottom of the aquifer where the water is. It's also physically deeper. It's lower than the Tunnel City Wanawak. And, and it would present some more opportunities for locations for, for wells within the city of Minatrista. That being said, there's currently a, quite a few restrictions on getting into the Mount Simon. That's why we would like to talk to the DNR, so that we can share with them the, the challenges that Minatrista has experienced thus far in getting a test well. We've also reached, the water engineers also reached out to Dave Trout, who owns the company that did the test well here next to City Hall. And he had indicated that he, he and other well drillers have had similar concerns and issues with the Tunnel City Wanawak. And he has also reached out to the DNR to, to discuss this. So we're certainly wanting to draw from that experience. I know the meeting hasn't taken place yet between Mr. Trout and the DNR, but we'd certainly like to, to be in the, in those discussions with the, with the DNR to talk about what these, sorry about that. So to talk about what the concerns are and see what the city's options are for our next two test wells. So with that, we would be looking at a meeting with the DNR as soon as possible here. There's been some, some folks that have been out of the office at the DNR, and that's delayed this, but they're looking at, I know, I think Mr. Trout was looking at the first week of February to meet with them. And that would really set the tone as far as where the city could come in with discussions with the DNR. So wanted to bring the council up to date. I really wish I had better news for the council, but it's, this is unfortunately part of the process in, in getting these next wells in.
So Ms. Fousky, can you tell me, when you talk about, you say Dave Trout is going to be meeting with the DNR, wouldn't somebody from our staff also be present in those meetings?
That's a great question, Madam Mayor. Mr. Trout would not be meeting with the DNR on the city's behalf. This is something that he had planned to do, and I, I believe had reached out to the DNR prior to our water engineers reaching out to him to find out what his experience has been. So he's not, he's, he wouldn't be meeting on behalf of the city of Minatrista. He's meeting with the DNR based on his business and other well drillers that are coming up with similar issues in, in finding well water within that Tunnel City Wanawak.
Okay. And then the Mount Simon, the Simon, that's, that's west of us, or kind of the western, southwestern area of Minatrista, is that correct?
Um, I'd have to take a look at the cross-sections again, but you're correct. I recall seeing the, the Mount Simon on the west side, close to seven. I, I believe it was present in both cross-sections that we were looking at that go through Minatrista.
So how, when would we know if we could drill into the Mount Simon?
We would be asking them in February, so I would, I would hope to have, I would absolutely provide an update to the council once we, once we've met with the DNR. But I'm hoping that we would have the preliminary discussions in February, but we know that this will take some time as far as getting the, the final approvals. We would have to go through that with the DNR to find out what all they would need to document that the Tunnel City is not working out for the city, and what would need to be in place in order to grant permission for a permanent well within that aquifer.
And then, do we need permission even to do a test well in that aquifer?
That's a good question. I would have to defer to our water engineer, and I can provide counsel with an update about that on this, on the next meeting.
I mean, there would be no need to do a test well if we know we can't drill into it, but...
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Counsel, other questions of...
But in the meantime, should we be doing some preliminary work to say if we get approval in years where we think we would drill? So we don't have to wait and then spend another couple of weeks or whatever?
Yeah. That's a great question, Councilmember Chumperlin. There's certainly, if, if we're allowed to go back into the Mount Simon, it certainly brings some other locations back on, on the discussion board. And I, and I would recommend to the council that when we start looking at test well sites, if we are allowed to go into the Mount Simon, that we, that the council allow the water engineers to do some of that preliminary work that we, you know, for looking at the well logs beforehand, before we bring some of these sites to the council. Because I feel like that, that would be a good use of time, so that we're bringing counsel, we're just doing that extra step before bringing it to council, so that you know that, that portion of the process has been vetted versus, you know, looking at just the two-dimensional on the map that we did previously.
Any questions, Sam? Okay. Kathleen?
What if they don't let us drill into it?
That's a, that's a great question, Councilmember Refkin. So we talked about that as well. Do we look at, instead of two municipal wells, do we do three? What are the challenges with that? Because you have that separation requirement between test wells. You know, we, we think that the Mount Simon would be the, the best next step for the city to consider. But if we're finding that it's an issue with the DNR, either just even to talk about it, or with permitting timeline, that sort of thing, if, if a three-well system is what we need to look at next, and, and look at the pros and cons of each option, that's something we could bring back to the council as well for discussion.
Did, did we confirm that one of their area neighboring cities has got permission to drill into that?
I thought St. Bonnie had, had a well.
I was thinking more Cologne, when I thought I heard a rumor.
I thought it was either Cologne or Jordan, I believe, recently was granted access to the aquifer. And with that, of course, comes some restrictions. It can only be used for domestic use, meaning that it can't be used for irrigation.
Oh, you're talking rural irrigation, farming?
Well, domestic, like within what's served from the city's system.
Okay.
So we need, so there's some components to that that we would need to get clarification from as, as part of the process in these discussions with the DNR. How do we, how do we measure that? What, what usage do you look at for domestic use? That's with, without the irrigation component to it. And how does that factor in when we look at, we have other walls, six and seven, within the Tunnel City Wanawak, that we are able to use for irrigation and, and how those calculations are made? So there are a lot of questions on how the appropriation would work out for that aquifer, should we have permission.
Yeah, that could get really complicated, because it's all going into the same system.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's, it's certainly something we can talk. I, I did ask the water engineers about that, and they said we, we would need to talk to the DNR on how we would calculate that. Because we have, the, the city has appropriation permits from the DNR. And so it's a matter of, of taking a look at what we've, what we pull from, if we were able to, from the Mount Simon compared to what the demand is for domestic use. So there's certainly some number crunching that would have to go on, but it's, again, it was looking at it, it was the next best option to look at for, for the city of Minatrista.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, how many aquifers are in the city of Minatrista?
Well, goodness. Well, it depends where you go through. And I'm going off memory on the, on the cross-section. I know there's a, a little, I would call it just a blurb of the Jordan aquifer. It's a shallow aquifer. I think it's along Highway 7. And then there's some, some drift aquifers, which I believe, well, five is in a drift, a glacial drift, and the water quality and the capacity out of those are poorer, poorer quality and, and less consistency when it comes to capacity. And I'm, I'm just thinking of where that, that pine fault is. There's another aquifer that shows up to the east of that fault on the geologic atlas, but I don't recall the name on my head.
That's not the Franconian. That's, okay, the Franconian, yeah.
That's a, that's a big one. Runs up to the north side. There's also the Prairie du Chayne that's near here, that we're actually...
I didn't think we actually were in...
We are in the Prairie du Chayne through the Mount Simon.
Oh, through the Mount Simon.
That wall three is actually into the Prairie du Chayne.
Okay.
So, and then four is the Mount Simon, our five is a glacial drift, and then the new six and seven are in the Tunnel City Wanawaks.
Okay. And any other questions regarding that? Okay, and uh, next, the um, that's an update or um on the south water treatment plant operations.
Uh, certainly, Madam Mayor, I can start out with it and then I'll turn it over to Superintendent Peters to bring council up to date with what's happened since the, the packet went out. Um, but Public Works staff has been working with S E H, who um did the design of the water treatment plant to address the water quality issues that were arising when they were going above eight thousand gallons per minute. Um, so they're looking at adding some filter media to both filters. Um, because when they've been backwashing the filters, um, a portion of that, um, that filter bed was lost during that backwash op, operation. Um, and this would allow for longer runtime, so um Superintendent Peters can certainly talk about what they were doing for backwash times, how often they had to run the backwash versus what they're anticipating with this replenishment of filter. And then they're also looking at putting in some polymers um for the wa, raw water that comes into the plant. And um, just high level, my understanding, again, Mr. Superintendent Peters can probably speak to this a little more eloquently than I can, but the, the polymers um added to the raw water, it, it binds better to the filter media and provides a more efficient um efficient filter bed as the water moves through there, so. That was the update as I know it, and again Superintendent Peters can answer, um, go a little further what's happened over the last week or so.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, counsel, um, actually Miles Jensen, John Tome, and Brett Weiss from S C H did stop out, uh, different Brett Weiss than the Brett Weiss.
I was gonna say, I thought Brett Weiss was.
It really threw me off when I first heard that too. So, just so you don't know, Brett Weiss is one of the principal owners of WSB, the W.
So this is a different one, okay.
But they were all to discuss our issues and I, I think everybody got thrown into a tizzy. Um, our issue is not exactly the quantity of water that we can get out of here. Um, we have no problem pumping the thousand, which has never been an issue. The problem is the quality, once we get over that eight hundred gallon, eight hundred fifty gallon, our water equality goes right, right down the toilet. I mean, it's just terrible, it's, and what we're finding out is the media, the green sand that's in there is not um clingy enough to absorb the minerals that we're trying to pull out. So what S C H is, um, and I think was also um something that WSB was talking about was adding polymers to the raw water coming in, and what this polymer will do is that'll help make it like sticky almost, it's almost like a, it, it's um, like a syrup, it's really thick.
Yeah.
Um, and what it'll do is it'll make the, um, so that as it's going through the filter media, the particles that it's gonna cling to, which is gonna be the iron, the manganese.
Like an alum treatment kind of.
Yep, it's gonna, it's gonna make it clingier so it actually binds more to the filter sand in there. Um, one of the other things that they did too is they had taken a core sample of the, of the, both the anthracite and the green sand that's in there. Um, and unbeknownst us, we did not know any of, what we should be doing here because we kind of, you know, kind of are brand new to this whole thing and they never fill us in on this. But we found out that the anthracite sand, which is the top layer, should be about twelve inches thick and we're down about five, six inches, which is common. Um, we should be checking every three to four years because during the backwash cycles, you're flushing everything out and the anthracite sand's on top and it's a little lighter, so as you're backwashing and cleaning everything out, it's taking some of that particle sand with it. Um, so what is being recommended both by W uh S B and S C H is to take the filter, one filter at a time, out of service and supersaturate the entire media bed with uh permanganate. It's a twenty hour process, so you're gonna oversaturate this, you're gonna really, you know, what this is gonna do is gonna eat up the particles in there that doesn't want. And then we'll come through and while that's in there, we can add back in the anthracite sand that we need. We'll do some calculations, they come in fifty pound bags, we can add to each one. Now that everything's ready to go, we're gonna start backwashing to get rid of all the permanganate in there. So we'll watch that come through, it'll be dirty to begin with because it'll be getting all that uh particle out of there, it's similar to what you do with your um um water softener at home, when it recycles to clean out the, to clean out the particles. Same thing just on a grander scale. So once that water comes out clean and clear, then we can put that back in the, into usage and we'll do the other one. But this should give us a lot more longer life, adding this polymers now as it's coming through should cling on here, right now we're getting thirteen hours between backwashes. Which is hardly any time at all. Um, the water that's used in the backwash doesn't just go down the drain, it goes into a subtranium base that we have in the plant, our sludge tank. And what that's supposed to do is it's supposed to allow in between the backwashes for this, to settle out. So we have a skimmer on top that takes the good water and reuses it. We don't have enough time for this to allow this to settle out, that's the unfortunate part right now. With adding these polymers, S C H thinks they can get thirty hours between runtimes, which is more than double. We're hoping for twenty to twenty-five, that's what we need, so we can actually start reclaiming this water instead of throwing it down the drain, which we're basically doing, we can start reusing this water, so it'll save water that way too. But if we can get, you know, twenty, twenty-five, even thirty hours of runtime between filters, that'll be significant use. And if we can get this to pump at a thousand gallons per minute like it's supposed to, with a significant water quality, not quantity, but the quality of the water coming out looking good, that's gonna be a bonus, and that's what we're truly striving for. Um, they're developing a small scale pump right now, we're gonna get a five gallon pail of this, we're gonna start injecting a little bit of it into it uh to see how this is gonna go and what our formula was gonna go, they're thinking about one tenth of a pound per hundred and twenty thousand gallons of water, so it's very minimal it has to go in to make this filter work, so. We're excited, hopefully we get this out of there, I mean, like I say, if we can get our runtime between backwashes from thirteen hours to over twenty, that's a bonus for us and I'd say we can re-save water, we're not gonna be depositing this out of there, so it's, it's gonna be a win-win all the way around.
Okay.
What happens to our water when one of the filters is down?
We have two sets of filters, so there's, there's two filters in there, so we'll run off the one. And the other one will be sitting here for that, it'll be no problem, we'll do this during the winters when we're gonna do it now. And then in four, three, four years, again, again, we'll check in January so we can always do it in the low, low demand times, we'll do the north end too. Um, that's scheduled for, they're coming back out next week to do that as well, just to check that. This is all stuff that we're finding out that should have been done, that we were not told about when the original plants were put in service. Um, the engineer who was on the job, who did the design and did all that stuff, is no longer with them and suffice it to say, did not inform us of a lot of stuff that's going on. Uh, John Tome, who is out there right now, who is their, kind of their water guru, um, he was head of um the water for Minneapolis for forty plus years. He is very knowledgeable, he teaches classes on water treatment plants, uh, Mike has actually been to that, I'm gonna send another guy to that. It's, he, he's, he's unbelievably smart, I mean, he is, we're at this level, he talks at this level, it's unbelievable how much he knows, so. Um, with him designing this pump and getting this all in here, it should be really good. Um, and I know it was brought up, you know, what is the polymers? It is a food grade based additive, I mean, you could, if you get it past, like John said, if you get it past your lips, it's so thick you could drink it straight out of the, right out of the container, it's not gonna hurt you, it's all food based. So, I mean, there's nothing, but most of it's gonna get cling, clung on, and that's what's gonna help, you know, absorb into that sand. A little bit will get through, but not much, it's gonna be, you know, that's what's gonna be cleaning out the particles for us, so.
Okay.
So, um, Gary, you said this process of, for the whole filters, is it every three to four years?
Correct, yep, it's just something that should have been done that we did not know about. And we're pushing five years now, so we're a little bit behind the eight ball, so again, we'll be doing it, like I say, we've got, I've got it on my calendar that we check this and, and keep up in. S C H said that, you know, they're more, and I'm sure WSB too has said they'll be more than happy to help us again when it comes time to do this. And they apologize for not filling us in on this, you know, I wish they would have gave us a check sheet of everything we have. We do have that now, we're working on that to see what's gotta be done, just so we keep up with everything, so that's necessary.
Good, questions?
No, Gary, I, Gary was nice enough to call me today, had a whole ton of questions that he's answered and about the polymers and um whether there have been studies done about this before, and he went into it in great depth with me and I appreciate that.
Yeah, good, and good, and good to ask because um, last thing.
Yeah, they've been used for years, I mean, a lot, a long time, I mean, I mean, it's used nationwide in here, I mean, they've done several plants this way. Um, and just to kind of touch on one other subject, most of the time the um plants are based on a pilot plant study of the wells. And from what I understand is the pilot plant study that was done, was done on the original well, uh, test well or monitoring well that we had in the Kings Point, off of Kings Point in the actual Woodland Cove area that has been sealed, and that's what the information they used to design this plant, um, is what they used. Um, John Tome said it's not the best way of doing it, but since the wells were not drilled, they didn't do a test well, they just drilled and went to use them. It was pretty close, he's doing the water analysis just to make sure that everything is, you know, up to par on that, so we'll know a little bit better, but uh most times the pilot plant is done, you know, with the test well and that stuff, but they use that study since it's the same aquifer, so he doesn't think it's gonna be too far apart, but just so you know, there was a, there was a pilot plant, a pilot study done, it was just done on the test well in the same aquifer.
Okay.
So.
Um, and then Gary, can you uh give us a quick uh update on the water tower, oh, any more questions on the plant?
Just when you do this, is there any sludge or anything in the water, or residents gonna notice any change or discoloration or?
Nope, they should uh notice better quality water. I mean, it'll definitely be better quality once we get this back to where the media is supposed to be. Like I say, it's similar to like you flushing out your uh water softener at home and, and re-energizing it, so.
So, would, so when you guys flush your hydrants, for instance, and sometimes residents notice a little discoloration for a little bit, is that, are they going to expect to see that or not?
No, what you're seeing that is, um, not like the movies when the hydrant gets knocked off, it shoots water, ours are shut off below ground. So as they drain down, there's a drain tube in there so they don't freeze.
Yeah.
So as you get that, so you're gonna build up a little bit of rust inside of the actual
Oh, okay.
uh piping, and that's what you're seeing coming up, that's why before you hook anything up, you always, you know, quote unquote flush the hydrant before a fire truck gets hooked up, you wanna run that rust through pumps and stuff. That's why you see that initial blast of rusty kind of water come out and it turns clear.
People won't see that.
Nope, you won't see that, nope.
All right, okay, good.
Um, just one quick, with all of this that's happened, um, has the city, has this cost the city any money?
Not as of yet, and it's looking probably about uh, the anthracite sand is something we would have to buy anyways on a regular basis, so we'll find out what that cost will be. Um, the cost of the pump and stuff, John is saying it's gonna be less than probably five thousand dollars. Um, the chemical that we're gonna be getting, he'll be pricing that out too um for us, so Hawkins is our only chemical company that we have. Fortunately for the entire five state area, the one we were using is out of business, actually got bought out by them, so there's one chemical supplier. So we're kind of at their mercy for what they're gonna charge us, but uh, um, we'll get our pricing up beforehand and stuff, but it does not sound like these pumps are real expensive, there will be a little bit of um expense because we would like this hooked into the SCADA system to keep a monitor on that so that we can make sure that if something would go wrong in the middle of the night where the pump stops working or it's overfeeding, we do get an alarm on that, so there'll be a little bit of cost in there. Um, but we were just wanna get this set to where, what size pump we need, how much our feed rate, and we'll, you know, get the correct.
And we would have had that, we should have had that before anyway, so.
Most likely it should have been installed before, I mean, a lot of new plants are getting them installed because of what's happening in there. A lot of oil plants are getting retrofit to this, um, they um said that their last one, they um did ten or twelve years ago, they did, they re-overhaul, I guess, and, uh, and over. Uh, Ortonville's got it, uh, Lakeland, so.
Right, but then um I think to Pam's point too, I'm assuming we don't have to pay for the engineering of this.
No, not, that sounds like they're gonna take it, we'll probably end up paying for a pump.
Yeah.
But they'll take care of everything else, so.
Good question, yeah.
And I'll fight for that, so.
Good.
And when we can, so if we can increase it to twenty to thirty hours for the reef, the backwashing?
Yes.
What'll that do for the water in the summer, how much more?
Should, we should be able to get a, quite a bit of more runtime out of it, so at maximum, at maximum capacity, we should be able to to run max for quite a while before we have to, you know, slow it down to get the, the backwash, and so if everything works out right, we should never have really a, a downtime. Um, you know, if we get another drought like we did and it, and everybody's watering at the, at the rate they were, of course we will, but on most, you know, quote unquote, normal operating circumstances, we should have plenty of coverage. Especially with the new tower going in with storage and stuff like that, so, and when we get the third treatment plant on, I mean, it'll, it'll be night and day differences, so.
So, water tower, where are we at?
We just actually got an email today from uh Scott Addin, uh Addington, he is the designer in charge of um the install for the um, for Xcel. And we're on track for the week of the twenty-fourth, it's still on track to get uh board in through there. Um, I did talk to Chad and he was told that all the electrical components are done on the tower. All the lighting's in place, all the conduit, everything's run, all the wiring's there, everything's out to where the panel should be installed. Um, the SCADA system is in place, uh, the monitors are in, so everything's set to go, we're just waiting for Xcel Energy, so they're still on schedule for that week of the twenty-fourth, which.
And then once Xcel Energy does, what, is there additional work that the other?
They just have to hook from the, once they get their panel set and they get it hooked up to the tra, the transformer in and the, and the panel set on the
Right.
by the tower, they just have to make their hookup from the panel to the, to the tower.
So do you think the first week of February it'll start filling?
Um, we're hoping, we'll see what happens with it, so we're hoping to get it filled, well, the, you know, of course, I had to go through the whole decontamination again and, you know, so the chlorination of it, which, you know, it's not an overly big deal, but still we have to do it again, so.
I just see such a waste to waste all that water.
So, but we're hoping to get it online, you know, I'm, by the end of February it'd be great to have it online.
Yeah, yeah.
So how long after Xcel hooks the power up can we fill it, do the decolorization?
Well, once they get, well, it'll wait for electricians to get in there, and I don't know how long that'll be, if that'll take a week or whatever to hook everything up, make sure everything's running. Um, and then we can start filling, so I mean, it'll take uh two samples, twenty-four hours apiece. So you're talking at least three, probably, probably, I would say a good five days to get that tower filled. You know, test it, you know, wait, get it tested again the next day, and then you'll have to take a tower down a little bit because you don't wanna send all that chlorinated water, you'll have to take down a certain amount of it, which will, they'll calculate for us, then we'll fill it back up, dilute it out, and then we can send it into the system, so, you know, it takes about five days to get everything filled, diluted, or uh treated and then diluted and then ready to go, so.
All right, well, keep us posted, thanks Gary. So, Mr. De Colias, can you come to the podium so that we can clearly hear you and it's also better for recording?
Yes.
Thank you. And, and Mr. De Colias, you have to.
I'm Steve De Colias, I'm at fifty-four fifteen, is it fifteen? I said it wrong there, Yellowstone Trail in Minatrista. Uh, just a couple of questions, that was really a great explanation, thank you, of the treatment plant. When will this occur, when will all this backwashing and new sand and the whole retrofit?
Everything's being calculated out right now for what we need and uh to be ordered here, so I would venture to guess within the next couple of weeks, we should be in the process of getting anything done.
That's correct.
We'll have to get everything ordered up and get it here, so, supply chain issue, I'm hoping is not gonna be an issue, but unfortunately with everything else, it could be.
Okay, thanks, and then the other question I have, I appreciate the update on the water tower as well. It sounds like we're probably another year out. If we're thinking about twenty-four, it's gonna be twenty-five, given what we've learned today about there, it was actually a couple of weeks ago about the test well. Is there any opportunity to go into the two wells that are unused, and I don't remember the numbers, and provide extra filtration, I know one was, had, had a manganese problem. And I don't know what the issue was with the other one, maybe they were both manganese. But if we can't drill another well, those two wells sound like our only option.
Well, so a couple of things you should be aware of that we're doing. Uh, new developments are new homes and even some of the um new additions, um, segments in Woodland Cove are going to be using their um ponds for irrigation. And so, and they'll have to drill um shallower wells to fill those ponds for irrigation, so. Um, it's not like when they go dry, then they have to go somewhere else. And, and, and then we're, so that's one thing, that will help a little bit or somewhat. Again, I don't know how much, but that'll help somewhat. We're also gonna be talking at the city level here um eventually on, on different things, um uh making sure that the soil is correct um before they put down sod. We're gonna be talking about in ordinance as to when they can put down sod. All of these things are gonna come into play sometime before the spring. And so with that, that will also help alleviate some of the issues that we had this past summer. Maybe not all of them, but the other thing too that we're doing is an educational component too, to try and educate people not to overwater. And um, so those are, all of those things I think combined. And so those are, all of those things, I think, combined. In adding, in addition to your, answer to your well question, that's something we'd have to look at. I know Gary has said he absolutely doesn't want to use those wells because of the water quality. And then what happens is they have to flush the, the filters more frequently, and then there's more downtime. So we have to weigh all of that.
Right. But if we don't have any other wells?
Well, we're gonna get some more wells. I'm confident.
Does the DNR work at life, at speed of life, or like the speed of molasses?
Yeah, the second one. Right, right.
So, all right. Well, I think it's worth considering. The other thing that you may want to consider is, you know, from a watering perspective, this odd even, maybe we need to go to a three or four-day cycle.
Yep.
I know I've already looked into buying a new controller because mine doesn't have that option. But, I mean, for $50 or $75 an hour, with my time, I can replace it.
Yeah. And we've even talked about, yeah, we've talked about that. And that might have to be an option, too, which wouldn't be too bad, especially under normal circumstances. Even if it's dry, even three or four days in between is not a problem for most lawns, so.
I think it probably is better.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mr. DeColis.
On your, I just had one thing. We do supplement with well three right now, yet is, it's non-filtered water, but it is treated at the point source.
Yep.
Well, five, which is in the Saunders area, can hook to the pressure tank, the 10,000 gallon pressure tank that we have there. That is the one that, when the line broke on Kings Point, we had to fire that back up. And within two hours, we were getting dirty water complaints because that water is so bad. I mean, the iron content and the manganese content is so high in there. And the polymers that we had do not sequester that at that point.
Right.
And we do not have a polymer feed over there. I should say, a permanganate feed that could help that over there. And it would be too costly to install just on something like that. Well, four is in the Mount Simon. We could use that one. We do use that. If there's a fire, we've opened that up before. Right away, we turn that one on to help for fire suppression and, you know, and stuff. But that, too, is in an aqua, part of the aquifer. And I believe you were here when we were redoing that. And Brian can remember this, too. We bailed that thing for days and days, pulled out what almost 200 yards of fill that just kept caving in. So that's now a screened, a screened well.
Gary, is that something we can maybe trade, look with the, work with the DNR on trading out a bad well?
We might. We might be able to. That, that well is just, the problem is.
That's actually not a bad idea. Yeah.
The problem is a well four is if during high usage, you're actually pulling some of that sand into the system.
Right.
So we are getting some of that. And that, that's the other reason that we don't want to, I mean, because now you have that in the system. So, you know, it's, it's a real fine silica-type sand. You can't, you know, if you put it on glass, you'll see it settle out. You know, you can see that there. That's why I use it minimal. So.
But that's not a bad idea if we say we'll close that one down.
And we've talked about that as having one that we could give up, so.
So the sediment in that one, is that just from the well being bad or?
It's from the aquifer itself being in a, in the soft part of the, in the soft part of the aquifer.
So if we drill into it again, we could run into the same problem?
Could. Most likely not. You know, most of it, you know, from what I understand, I mean, the Mount Simon is pretty good. I think we're kind of more in a pocketed area that was developed. So they actually dropped a dynamite charge in there to open it up. And I think it's just such a soft, sleety stone in there. You can see it on the video. It would be crystal clear for, next day you come back, it's all caved in. It just starts to, you know, as the water's pouring in.
The thing with aquifers is they generally cover a large area, and you, you can have a really hard area and you can, like Gary said, a really soft area. So hopefully, we'll hit a harder area.
Just saying with our luck.
Come on, Kathleen. Don't jinx it. Right. All right. All right. Any other questions?
I want to thank Steve for the Victoria Water System diagram.
I just thought it was a nice graphic.
It's a great diagram, and it's very clear and very easy to understand. I hope we do something along those same lines.
Similar to that. I think WSB has provided something very similar. And it's just a matter of getting that out so people understand how the whole process works.
Wait for the January campaign at Senate.
All right. All right. Let's see. I think that concludes all of our business items. We don't have to take any action on that one. Next one is staff reports. I'll go to Ms. Paulfo's first.
Yeah. So as I stated in our item earlier, Ryan will start as building inspector on Monday, the 24th. Renee is gonna start as our utility billing and recycling coordinator on the 27th. And then Brian and I were briefly just talking about the logistics for the first round interviews, whether that has to be a special meeting or just a notice of the quorum of the council. So we'll speak with the attorneys and Sharon and Patty and make sure notices out to you guys and the public in whatever way we need to, so.
Okay. We should have time because those, those special meetings aren't gonna be until the second.
Second and third. And they just need a three-day notice.
Yeah. And I don't know if it needs to be a special meeting or just kind of a posting of the quorum of council, like a special event would be or something.
Well, why don't we do this? Just to make sure that we're covered, why don't we have a motion to have a special meeting on February 2nd and 3rd? And if, then, just to make sure that we're covered, because I would hate to come find out that we can't. So as we talked about in our work session, we're gonna, for interviews of our candidates for the position for the administrator, we're gonna have two, at one morning and one afternoon on the 2nd and on the 3rd of February. And the council, it'll be a quorum because the council will be meeting. Is there a motion to approve or to approve special meetings for January 2nd from?
February 2nd.
February 2nd from?
Nine to noon.
Nine to noon and February 3rd, 11, 11 till?
Noon to 5.
Noon to 5.
Noon to 5.
You're, you're thinking?
Yep. I'm sorry. Noon to 5. Thank you.
Some move.
Thank you, Kathleen. And is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Mr. Trumperland made that second. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. And then you can check on the second round if we need a similar motion. But we could make that at our February 7th meeting, so.
Correct.
Thank you. Good thing you brought that up. All right. Anything else?
No. The only other thing is just to remind everyone that the next meeting is three weeks from last night. I guess it's Monday with the extra, 5th Monday in January, or be on Monday, February 7th, our next regular council meeting. I think we're just gonna start at 5:30 the work session.
I think so.
I think we'll, we'll plan on that. I guess, seeing we started so early tonight at, you know, 4:30, we'll go 5:30 for the work session on the 7th.
Okay, good. Council reports. Kathleen, anything?
I am attending the mound fire advisory committee tomorrow. And I am attending the Westonoke Community and Commerce meeting and on Thursday.
Thank you.
And I will bring the updates at the next meeting.
Okay.
And I attended the Glossbe Center Board Meeting, and they have postponed their annual meeting until March because of COVID. And we're gonna have a special work session on January 27th that I'm going to actually lead to get them to a budget.
Okay. Good for you. And we did get a letter. I, I got a letter for the March 10th. And so if, if that does happen, I will plan to be there.
Great.
All right.
We'll be attending Pioneer Ser Creek February meeting, or January, this Thursday to 20th.
Okay.
I had the personal committee meeting on the 10th to discuss the employment for the building inspector. That's it.
Okay. So I attended the Regional Council of Mayors Public Safety Meeting, which was held in Eden Prairie on last Monday. It was very well-attended, probably about, oh, 30 to 40 mayors, and along with a lot of police chiefs and officers from many different communities. And the, the whole reason for this is, as you know, Minneapolis and St. Paul, of course, have had a huge number of car thieves and carjackings and so on. The inner-ring suburbs such as areas like Edina and Richfield, and those have also experienced an uptick in these type of criminal activities. And so there's been an outcry from the public that we address, that mayors and councils and the police address these issues. The problem is that, one of the issues is that these people that are apprehended go through the system and then they're, they're, they're set free. In other words, they don't have to serve time, or their time is minimal, or there's no bail and so on. And so what we're trying to do, or what the idea is, to get the prosecution together along with the judicial system to really kind of knuckle down on, on some of these individuals because many of them are multiple repeat offenders. One of the issues that we, that they were talking about is that a lot of these are juveniles. And so that creates a whole nother set of problems. So I'm not, won't go into all the details. I've talked with Lieutenant Squires about it, and we will kind of keep tabs on it. We haven't had a lot in our community. All I will say is be sure that you lock your cars. Don't leave things in your cars that are of value, because they, they'll walk by, they'll see something, they can snatch and grab so fast. So preventative measures do help to some extent. And they even say, lock your cars inside your garage and lock your garages. So just want to send out that message. Anything else you can think of on that note you need to add?
Madam Mayor, Member of Councils? No. I would say the other thing would be your garage door opener. Try to have that, as silly as it sounds, not visible at least in your car. Because if the car's unlocked, they'll hit the garage door opener, they'll go in, kind of reach in the mudroom, grab what they can, and take off. We, we haven't had that fortunately for a while out here, but the threat's ever-present. But for the most part, we haven't had any of the carjackings, thefts from autos. They, they tend to come in streaks. When you get it, you'll get 10, nine, 10 cars, because one person, two people just decided to find a neighborhood and pull on doors. So locking the doors would be, as the mayor said, the biggest thing that we would ask for. Because I would say the majority of thefts, the car is unlocked. We're not finding busted windows or anything of that nature. It's just they're trying doors and moving on if the door's locked, so.
So, and as I, I get more information, I'll, I'll share that with the council, too. I was going to attend the park commission meeting, but it was canceled due to a lack of a quorum. I know there were several park commissioners that were somewhat concerned about meeting in person. So we will bring those items back to our February Park Commission meeting. Hopefully, it'll go better. I also attended the Personnel Committee meeting. And then I will be attending the Planning Commission meeting, which will be next Monday. And that's it. With that, if there's a motion to adjourn, we can be adjourned.
Some move.
Thank you, Ms. Mortensen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. And we'll see you on the second. Thank you.
We'll be seeing a lot of each other.